Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Board of Education meeting, January 26, 2022. I'd like to call this meeting to order and establish a quorum.
Board President Sarah Hines.
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur. Board Member Ann Marie Rosen.
Yes.
Board Member Seaberry Nochbar.
Yes.
Board Member Carl Palestrini.
Yes.
I'd like to notify the audience that this open session will be audio recorded and posted to our website. And I'm sure everybody's noticing it's a different crowd up here at the front. Due to the recent Omnicron surge, several of our administrative staff members, including our superintendent, are currently isolated or quarantined this afternoon. So as a result of these absences, some of the items listed on our agenda this afternoon may be presented by alternate staff members or removed from the agenda altogether. I'd like to thank our remaining cabinet members who are here this afternoon for embodying our all hands on deck philosophy and stepping up to cover some of these topics. Specifically for today's meeting, I would like to recommend that we remove the closed session item 4A from the agenda. Can I please receive a motion to adopt the agenda with this modification?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda with the modification as stated.
I second.
Board President Sarah Hines.
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur.
Yes.
Board Member Ann Marie Rosen.
Yes.
Board Member Seaberry Nochbar.
Yes.
Board Member Carl Palestrini.
Yes.
Thank you. And again, I thank everybody for joining us here this afternoon. We are thankful to have you all in attendance with us today. So moving on to Agenda Item D, Pledge of Allegiance. Seaberry, could you please lead us? Yes. Thank you. I'd like to make a quick reminder for those of you that may have walked in a little bit late who are joining us for public comment this afternoon. If you could please go ahead and grab a number from the ticket dispenser. I'll start calling numbers as soon as we get into open comment. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item E, these are student representative ACT/CSCA comments, and we'll do a Board of Education roundtable. And we will go ahead and start with Hannah.
Hello. So, I would say definitely so far, it has been a very exciting and refreshing new year at Carmel High. It definitely started with the whole COVID surge, which is still happening, but I think that they've just handled it really well and gotten on top of it. We now have rapid COVID testing every single day at school that's available to all students and teachers. So I think that it's just been really effective, and it's, the cases have been going down, and no one's as worried about it anymore in classrooms. And I think so far, so good, and we're on a really good trajectory with it. And then this week, we have our first rally of the semester, which is the Winter Rally. And there's been a lot of planning going into that, and I think that everyone's very excited to just kind of get back in the groove of spirit and everything, especially with all the rescheduled games. Those have been starting to happen again too, for basketball and soccer especially. And we have our first three-point contest tomorrow, which has never happened before, but a ton of students have signed up, and I'm working it, and it'll be really fun, I think. And then spring sports preseason is also starting, and they've been having little modified practices here and there, which have been really good for students to start coming out and getting back into their sport. And we have our pending winter formal on February 12th, which has not been highly advertised yet, but we do have an outdoor venue that is saved for us if we decide and are able to have it. And for, we have a court of all club members, so club, whoa, club voting has been happening, which has been really nice for those students to get recognized who have made a difference in their clubs. And we have the elective fair coming up also, and they've been planning for that next month, which is exciting. And we also have our newest student advisory group, which I think was really successful. We had so many really willing and eager students coming out. Totally just a new group of people who I've never really had the chance to talk to, but it was super, super fascinating for me. And I'm really looking forward to building on that, and I think it'll be a really good experience and hopefully a long legacy that will be able to last for a while. And lastly, we have musical rehearsals, which I'm super excited for. They have the Drowsy Chaperone, and they've started that, and it's going to be in the spring. And then also the Vapa Show unfortunately has been getting postponed, but I think it'll happen eventually within the next couple of weeks, and it'll be a really beautiful performance. And that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, moving on to ACT and CSCA comments. We'll go ahead and start with Kathy Truesdale from ACT this afternoon. Yes.
Can you hear me? Oh, yes, you can. Okay, so I am here to give a shout, some shout-outs. And one of them is to Lee Cambra, who's our health teacher and ACT secretary. And she recently was awarded California Health Teacher of the Year. And so we're pretty excited about that for her. I think we'll hear more about that later. That was given by the California Association for Health, PE, Recreation, and Dance. And I also want to give a shout-out to River School 3rd grade teacher Pamela Galouli. She just got recertified again, National Board Certification. And the first time she was certified was 2000, then 2010. It was supposed to happen 2020, oops, my note. And, but it just, just happened, and so I think that just shows her dedication. Those of you that know about the National Board Certification, it's a big deal. So, um, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for all the work that you do. My lens is, right now, is elementary school. The teachers are working really, really hard, lots and lots of hours. Sped is on fire, working a lot too, and I thank you for their support, for your support. Thanks, you guys. Do I leave it on?
Sure, go ahead. Thanks, Kathy. All right. CSCA, Lisa?
Hi, I'm Lisa Brazil, the President of CSCA Carmel 190. I also have a few shout-outs. My first is to the district, specifically Ted and Craig. We've been working tirelessly with them on a couple of MOUs that you'll be seeing shortly. They're a great team. We really enjoy working with them, and so shout-out to you guys. Thank you so much. A couple others. So COVID numbers, as you know, remain high. Absences among students, faculty, and staff are going down a little bit, but boy, not that you would notice it in my office. So, um, thank you to the district for the foresight to hire up and provide COVID tracers. They have been invaluable, the hours and the work that they are putting in is, we couldn't be doing this without them. They're out there at, at least at our site, I know at middle school, they're here six, the COVID tracers are working six or seven days a week. They're out here every night after school. They're there at the morning, at 7:00, testing people to come into school. They're there lunch, break, after-school, testing teams. They're just doing so much. So the entire health staff throughout the district really deserves all the praise that we can give them. The other thing that I want to address is, and thank the district for, was their quick response on the COVID fire, or the Colorado fire. We had a lot of families that are still, they opened the road today, so people are going to be in school tomorrow, but we had a lot of students out of school, a lot of staff that had to go down to Big Sur and stay down there. I want to make a special shout-out to Tina Jarrow, who worked her tail off from the second that fire started, all weekend, connecting people, coordinating. So I was hoping you guys could just kind of make a special note to give her a thanks. And those are all the CSCA comments that we have this month. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lisa. Moving on to Board of Education comments, we'll start with you, Carl.
There it is. Okay, not a whole lot out there, but I did have a chance to visit the high school the other day and meet with the, actually, quite a bit of the staff of the Sandpiper. And they are delightful. They really are. And also got a chance to take a look at the auto shop, you know, wood-metal combination down there, which is very dear to my heart, and meet the new guy. And of course, there were kids working on cars down there, which is my thing. So that was cool. And I'll be at Tularcitos tomorrow assisting with the spelling bee. I am a veteran of spelling bees, mostly at River School. So having said that, the other thing I wanted to mention too is Tess, Board Member, received the Good Egg Award from the Carmel Valley Chamber. And let me tell you, I grew up in Carmel Valley, and that Good Egg Award has been around ever since I was a kid. It's a big deal out there. And if you get it twice, you're actually considered to be a double yoker, if you can believe that. Now, for Tess though, the work at Kishawa, improving the fields out there, the work with the fires, no matter where they are, all the work with COVID in the district, eating food to people and all of those things. She was a slam dunk choice for them, and will be recognized, I think, next month in February, or March, one of the two. But anyway, that's altruism, I think, at its best.
Thank you, Carl. Seaberry?
Yeah, I have just a couple of things I wanted to report on, and it's already, actually, it would have been mentioned, but I had a personal experience with COVID testing and tracing, and I tell you, I am so grateful for the system that we have in place. The tracers were wonderful, both at the middle school and the high school. They went out of their way to contact me, to talk to me, and not to mention all the testing and the protocols and the process in place. It's running incredibly smoothly, and as a parent, I am incredibly grateful for this system and this district that is just doing, in my perspective, a fantastic job. I've also just been blown away with sports. I participated or watched a couple of the basketball games. The coaches are wonderful, the system is set up really well. The high school and middle school are just nailing it. And so I, again, as a parent, I'm incredibly appreciative of these opportunities that our students have, and a district that really recognizes the importance of testing and tracing and making all these events able to happen. So that is it for me. Thanks.
Thanks, Seaberry. Ann Marie?
Hi, I just wanted to go over a couple of other things because we didn't have a chance to say anything last time. We had a wonderful meeting for the ROP and CTE Career Tech Ed. It was amazing to listen to what all the different schools in Salinas Valley have been doing. Monterey Peninsula, amazing to see what everybody's coming up with. Our program is becoming very robust in and of its own. We are expanding our programs personally, within our district. We're getting internships, externships going on, as well as additional classes. So congratulations to everybody that's involved with that. Barbara, hold on, Barbara, Barbara Goodman, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I, you know, keep hearing your name, amazing job, amazing job, everything, everybody's saying that. I wanted to say to the singer-songwriters, I went to your winter concert. It was amazing. I loved hearing what the students had to say through their writing of their songs. It was, it really touched my heart. Thank you. That was so nice to see. At CSBA Conference, I wanted to thank Superintendent, who's not here, and I wanted to thank Tricia Zerovich for setting up me to be able to go to the conference virtually. It was so nice to be able to be here and still be at the conference. I learned so much. I thought Victor Rios was, the keynote speaker was, he was just amazing to listen to his story. Student advisory, as Hannah had touched on, CHS students and CMS students. It's interesting how they have such a great social perspective. It was delightful to hear what they had to say, and thank you. I look forward to going next month. I wanted to have a shout-out to Tular, to Mr. A and to Mr. Peterson for setting up the morning walks, morning wake-up walks. Tuesday, Thursdays at Tular, you walk the track, starting about 8:20 or so. It's so much fun. There's a lot of kids that are involved. They've got, the parents have got music going with their kids, and some of the kids decide to opt-out and just want to do dancing, and it's, everybody's involved, and it is such a refreshing activity to go to. How about that? Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Ann Marie. Tess?
Yeah, so I'm limiting my site visits for obvious reasons, but first of all, thank you, Carl. That was really nice. But in December, I was invited to Liz Wells's drama class. She did a 30-minute version of A Christmas Carol, and her 27 students all played a role with less than two weeks of rehearsal. And given all the COVID limitations, Ms. Wells gave her students an auditioning experience, participating in the writing blocking of the script, memorizing lines and working with an ensemble to put on a final production. And it was an incredible performance showcasing what our students can do with limited time and resources at their disposal. So thank you, Liz, for sharing exactly why are you such a, you are such a gift to our district. Also, I want to thank you, Jessica, for your countless hours gathering all the communication needs for our district and coming to the table on the weekends when you had to get out the word for the Colorado fire, Palo Colorado fire. And I just, I appreciate your timeliness and your effective communication. You're a huge asset to us, so thank you.
Thanks, Tess. Thank you. I just have a few updates. There are a few sort of thank-yous and shout-outs also this afternoon. I would also like to thank, as Ann Marie did, our district and Ted and Tricia and those involved that are giving our Board of Education the opportunity for ongoing training and personal development to be better board members. So with the attendance of CSBA, which is the California State School Board Association event in Southern California that happened a few months ago. It was, it was really well-attended. It was very informational. I personally took a lot away from it and learned a ton. So I just wanted to thank everybody involved for allowing us to be a part of that. Thank you very much. I'd also like to thank Bill Schreier for inviting me into his mock trial tournament last weekend. It was so wonderful to see all the students participating in the particular trial that I joined. It was Carmel High students against a mock trial team from Southern California. And just to see these students, how well-spoken they are, and give their arguments and closing remarks, and how seriously they all take it, it was, it was really wonderful. So I'd like to thank the entire mock trial team and Bill for letting me sneak in there for, for a few hours. I would also, as Lisa Brazil said, I'd like to publicly thank Tina Jarrow on behalf of the Board of Education for everything that she's been doing. I don't want that to go unnoticed or unsaid, so thank you. And last but not least, I know we've all mentioned how wonderful our COVID response team has been with all of our parents and students and staff. I also have been on the personal receiving end of these communications, and they have been nothing but stellar and concise and so informational. And I know our COVID response team has been working very, very diligently over the past few months. And I know with all the changes that the CDPH has been making, they've had to pivot quite a few times. So I'd like to really thank Rick Lopez for all of his hard work. And if you could just indulge me for a few minutes, I really would love to shout-out to all of our health office staff and all of our contact tracers and testers that have been working tirelessly to make sure that they're communicating efficiently with families and students and all of our staff and all of our employees. So Debbie Taylor, Carolyn Sinclair, Mila Nelson, Melissa Anderson, Courtney Day, and Wilder Grumman are our Carmel Unified School District Health Office staff. So I would love just to thank all of you for everything that you're doing. And for our contact tracers and testers, Tina Jarrow, Tricia Zerovich, Kristen Quilty, Brandy Mooneyham, Adriana Ramos, Kristen Cardinelli, Jonathan Wood, Brendan Cook, Cassie Hansen, Danielle Caoli, and Maddie Parker. Thank you all so much for everything that you're doing on a daily basis with all of us to keep our schools open, to keep our staff safe, our students safe, our employees safe. We can't thank you enough for everything that you're doing. So with that, I'll pass it over for our superintendent message from Jessica this afternoon.
Good afternoon. As our district's Director of Communications, I will be sharing our superintendent's report on his behalf. So Superintendent Knight wishes to share the following heartfelt thank-yous, which repeat a lot of the thank-yous we've already heard. To Rick Lopez and Tina Jarrow, leads of our COVID response team for their work during this surge. Their leadership and coordination has allowed our schools and offices to operate and continue high-quality, in-person instruction for our students. To all of our staff for going above and beyond. Our all-hands-on-deck philosophy is being seen every day, and I am proud of our staff for putting their students' needs first. To all of our staff, first responders, and community groups for their work and support during the Colorado fire. Thank you to the generous Big Sur community and businesses for supporting our schools, including River Inn and Deechens for housing staff and providing meals to our students and staff members. Their generosity and hospitality have allowed Captain Cooper Elementary to maintain operations during this emergency. To Mr. Timothy Landec, our interim Chief Technology Officer, who joined our district earlier this week to embark on a comprehensive technology audit for our organization. And two other repeats, to Carmel High teacher Lee Cambra, who has been notified she will be receiving the California Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance Health Education Teacher of the Year Award. I look forward to our district celebrating her for this outstanding recognition soon. And to River School teacher Pam Galouli for renewing her National Board Certification. National Board Certification is the most respected educational professional certification, so we will be celebrating her for that achievement soon as well. Superintendent Knight also has a detailed update on the Stadium Lights Project at Carmel High School as follows. The district strives to maintain transparency and keep the public informed throughout the Stadium Lights Project process. The original plan was to bring the final EIR to this meeting for board approval. However, the district is instead providing a comprehensive update to the public and community regarding the status of its CEQA review for the proposed Stadium Lights Project. The complete update will be emailed to all, along with our board briefs from today's meeting later this evening. In summary, the district has carefully considered all public input received and is currently in the process of revising the draft EIR to incorporate new information and make changes to the proposed project in response to the feedback from the community. In order to ensure that public participation in the environmental review process is meaningful, the district will recirculate the draft EIR for a second round of public review and comment, once the revisions are complete. This new draft EIR will include all of the input we have received up to this point. At the appropriate time later this spring, the district will provide public notice of the availability of the revised EIR, including the beginning and end dates of the second round of public review and comment period. Additionally, the superintendent will be conducting a survey of students, parents, and staff on the options we have in terms of late start and lights, reviewing all possibilities for current and future schedules based upon the possibility of installing Stadium Lights. The district values the community's continued interest in the proposed project and looks forward to finding solutions. As I said, we will also be sending a memo to the public and our outreach group defining this new process as soon as possible. This concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jessica. And please thank Dr. Knight on our behalf as well. All right, moving on to Agenda Item F. Public comment on non-agendized open session and closed session items. Members of the public may address the board regarding items on the, we don't have anything on closed session. So, members of the public may address the board regarding items on the open session agenda or topics within the board's jurisdiction that are not on the agenda at this time. So I hope all of you who'd like to speak this afternoon grabbed a ticket, and we will go ahead and start with number 78, please.
Thank you. Okay. Members of the board, members of the public. My name is Robert Fenton. Some of the board members know me, Carl Palestrini. Marvin Biassati, who's former superintendent, knows me well. Let me give you a little background about myself before I talk. Formerly, I was PTA President of River School. I was President of Focus. I was Chairman of the Board Oversight Committee. I was basically the one that started the program to have the track put into middle school. And unfortunately, about 15 years ago, when we had two of our students die going off a cliff in Big Sur, I met with Marvin, and one of the reasons one of them died is because the volunteer fire department did not have the equipment that they needed. I sat down with Marvin Biassati. Within weeks, we raised enough money, so not something like that could never happen again. So everything I've tried to do with the district has been positive and to help the district. Now, what happened at River School, which you guys are very well aware of, was embarrassing to me, and I should have been embarrassing to the district. My wife taught for over 20 years in the Monterey School District. We never had an issue in the holidays of not being inclusive rather than exclusive. If a teacher wanted to bring a menorah, or if they want to teach about Kwanzaa, or Ramadan, or have something in the school, it was allowed. It was never prohibited. There was never a conflict. And for what happened at the school to have happened, and I saw some of the emails going back and forth between the superintendent, former superintendent, and the district, and parents being threatened if they were going to bring a menorah to the school. It's embarrassing. It's terrible. And, and for a Jewish family to be told you can bring a ornament-sized menorah to put on a Christmas tree. When I was PTA President, this never would have happened. We would have allowed things, we would have, for those that you don't know, by the way, there is something that circulates that says Hanukkah is an Israeli holiday. It's not. It's a Jewish holiday that's been celebrated for thousands of years. The kids in kindergarten are told it's an Israeli holiday, which is wrong. So I hope as a school board going forward, and I don't want to monopolize this because there are many other speakers, you're going to allow inclusivity. You're going to allow, you know, let, let people talk, let people do things, talk about things. It was terrible. It was so embarrassing. And, and I'm going to stop now because I know there's a lot of other speakers. Thank you for hearing what I have to say.
Thank you. Okay. Number 79. And I'd like to apologize, I did not remind everybody that we, that there is a three-minute timer per speaker. Thank you.
You're welcome. Hi, everybody. You know who I'm, I'm Tracy Henderson. I'm a mom of a sophomore at Carmel High School. I'm a licensed California attorney, and I'm also the founder of California Parents United. And I came here December 16th to tell you something really important in the law. California Department of Health Public Guidance is a non-binding recommendation by law. They did not follow the proper rule-making procedures in order for it to be a mandate or to have the force and effect of law. And we have been punitively implementing this recommendation in our schools based on a piece of paper that has no legal import. California Department of Public Health stood up, excuse me, November 12th, and I've sent you this entire order. They stood up in court and they conceded that the guidance is only a recommendation. Now, lawyers are running around the state trying to parse the mask and parse the testing and parse the quarantining, but it's all the same piece of paper. They didn't give the public the due process to make it a rule. The governor tried to waive the APA in his executive order, but that's not legally tenable. Under the Emergency Services Act, the APA and the ESA, when they come up against each other, the APA wins. So I was coming here to tell you that you have the power, as a school board, to end this and let parents choose. I also sent you a copy of the 80-page writ I just filed in Southern California. I don't want you to fall asleep reading it. I don't want you to fall asleep reading it, but pages 32 to 35, if you're interested, give you the law. It's statutes. It's not something made by a state agency. And when I came here, Ted Knight decided to call the sheriffs on me, as you know, and seven sheriffs showed up. And he stood in the middle of the library, and he looked me in the face when nobody else was around, and he said, "If you don't leave, Tracy, I'm going to have you charged with trespass." And I looked at him, and I said, "Well, go ahead, Ted, because that's filing a false police report, and that's actually breaking the law." The officers didn't do as bidding, as you know. They went to him, and they actually said, "If... I think you should call your lawyer because you're discriminating against her." Ted Knight has already been sued for discrimination once. Then he turned around the next day, and he went to the Monterey Herald, the Monterey Carmel Pinecone, and he talked about me. You can't imagine the calls I got. And he lied. He said these parents were an angry mob, that they tried to break the door down, that they were spewing expletives. That is a lie. Under his contract, Section 8, he can be fired for cause for lying, and we have the evidence. So I'm asking you, as the board, to stop this leader from continuing this culture. He's getting into power struggles with moms, with doctor's notes, and he's just about to get into another power struggle with me over my daughter's, my 16-year-old daughter's doctor's note. You saw the email that I sent you. I'm not allowed to go to campus and talk to my daughter's teachers. In what world are we living in? This needs to stop. You are the culture creators. You're the leaders of this community, and I implore you to make it stop. No more power struggles with moms with doctor's notes. Please. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Number 80, please.
Okay. As a behavioral health clinician, it is my obligation to speak out about the mental illness that has turned this community into the walking dead. Many of those who have lived here all their lives don't realize that they have been deprived from the beautiful sovereignty given by God and protected by the Constitution. This has been done through a systematic conditioning through fear, which the nanny state government slowly takes your rights away until you reach this Orwellian world of mass hypnosis. I know every parent of masked children are seeing their babies suffering every day and hearing them crying every night. The DSM-5 diagnosis for illness anxiety disorder, formerly known as hypochondria, is obvious in this community, yet normalized. This is a preoccupation with having or acquiring a serious illness which can be clearly excessive or disproportionate despite no present or mild bodily symptoms. There is a high level of anxiety and alarm about personal health. The individual performs excessive health-related behaviors such as the wearing of a useless mask and obsessive COVID testing when asymptomatic and healthy, or exhibits maladaptive avoidance such as the psychological torture and social isolation and distancing. This condition can be diagnosed at six months of symptoms, and we are at two years. Please note that we have zero randomized controlled trials that show masks. Even N95 stopped the spread of respiratory disease. Therefore, our mandates are based solely on the opinion of those profiting off of them and not scientific data. Stockholm Syndrome is where captives develop a psychological alliance with their captors who are keeping them in captivity. This abusive relationship is apparent in the oppression of our community members by those in public servant positions through their blatant constitutional and human rights violations, discrimination, and child abuse neglect endangerment that seems to completely go unchallenged. Victims form emotional bonds with their abusers and actually become sympathetic towards them. When given the chance to escape or fight back, they choose to stay in bondage. They might even protect and defend their captors from facing consequences for their abusive actions that they support and justify. They display negative feelings towards friends, families, or authorities who try to rescue them or speak truth to them. It also includes symptoms of PTSD. The longer we force harmful masks on our children and allow these conditions to go untreated, the more long-term damage to the physical, psychological, and spiritual health of our children that will take generations to repair. Rates of other mental illness, developmental delays, disorders, academic failure, and suicide have all increased. Masks have led to numerous medical conditions, injuries, and even death of children. Parents, please stop ignoring your children's cries and stop consenting to them being abused by sending them masks to school every day. Learn and enforce your rights and take back your power and authority that you have over public servants. The greatest threat to our democracy is those in public servant positions telling parents that they cannot do whatever is necessary to protect and defend their children. Most importantly, rescue your children from their oppressive oppressors and be their hero.
Thank you. Number 81, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Phil. I have a child in the Carmel Unified School District. I am not anti-vaccine, but I am anti-mandate, especially for our kids. I spoke at the last meeting and asked for better opportunities for parental input regarding the district's pandemic response. I also urged the board to provide feedback to the state regarding any proposed vaccine mandate. The board has a copy of a letter from the Rockland School District addressed to our state legislators. Over 40 school district officials have signed this letter. We are asking you to consider and endorse this letter, or something similar. Paraphrasing, the letter states, "California districts have been doing reasonably well without a child vaccine mandate. We need to consider the social, emotional, mental, financial, and educational impacts to pandemic mandates." Number three, parental choice must be acknowledged at some point. A mandate silences that choice. And number four, finally, as the California State of Emergency is ended on March 31st, let's get back to local control and decision-making. Please consider signing on to this letter. In addition, there are several proposed state bills that have recently been introduced. Senate Bill 866 allows minors 12 years and over the ability to consent to receive vaccinations without parental consent. Senate Bill 871 imposes a COVID-19 vaccine mandate on all schoolchildren in order to attend in-person K-12 public or private schools and removes any personal belief exemption. If any of you have concerns about these proposed bills, now is the time to speak with our state legislators. This board can be a voice for those of us in the community who oppose mandates. As a school board member, you have a better chance than we do at scheduling a meeting with our state assembly member Mark Stone or State Senator John Laird. You may have worked with them in the past, or you may know them personally. Please advocate for parental choice when it comes to child vaccine mandates. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 82, please.
Good afternoon. Hello, Carl. My name is Mitch Winnick. I'm the dean of Monterey College of Law. And as an academic administrator, I certainly empathize with you, the challenges you have to set policies in this day and age. I'm here to echo a bit of what Bob Fenton said. As a Jewish family who had my children come up through this school district with great success, we have high expectations for this school district. And it does concern me, even if there's one incidence of what appears to be a lack of influencing the policy to be tolerant, inclusive, and sensitive to all of the community members that we serve here in the Carmel School District. It's not easy to answer to so many, so many groups and to support inclusiveness and equity and fairness, even down to the individual student or the individual family. But like you, I have high expectations for this school district. The failure of the school board to speak out and take the teachable moment with your school administrators and ask them to take the teachable moment with their faculty, who then could take the teachable moment with their students, to talk about things about the differences of religion, the dangers of having imagery such as swastikas or hangmanuses or burning crosses, and the impact that that's had on the history of America. I think we are up to being able to discuss those things in a tolerant and open manner, and I would encourage you, as the school board, to take the leadership, to take the teachable moment to work with those under you, to be more open and active in that means. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 83, please.
How you doing? So I'm Jim Peelman, here on behalf of my wife Lindsay. We have a daughter in fifth grade and a daughter in seventh grade. And I know, just in hearing you all spoke at the outset, talking about the formation of a new student advisory committee, which is a great thing at the high school level, I wanted to kind of submit for your recommendation and consideration the formation of a junior student advisory committee as well. You know, I think when you look at, you know, having a voice, you know, having a voice at that young age in middle school, and especially as fifth graders as well, it's a very important piece, I think, having that voice and helping create future initiatives and such for the expansion and the improvement of the overall experience even at the junior levels. And this discussion and this sense of request, I think, came up towards the end of last year when we had several members of the fifth-grade class at River. They actually, you know, took the time to speak out and collaborate with each other and to speak out in a very constructive way, utilizing the six pillars of character that they are taught at River, to speak in opposition to a PTA decision point. And it was a wonderful thing to see, for those of you that heard, or at least were there. It was really a great thing to kind of see their level of collaboration, their spirit and their drive to work together and express their views. And sadly, the response from the PTA was less than professional, very sharp-tone email response, did not even have the encouragement to have the students get a direct reply from the PTA directly in class. And, you know, my sense is that if we had the formation of an advisory committee and we have a sense of governance and structure, that those young voices might have the ability to kind of, you know, get their voices heard in a more, in a more meaningful way. And so I kind of submit that for your recommendation, and I will have a white paper submitted to your team as well, so that you can kind of chew on that a little further. But, thank you.
Thank you. Number 84, please.
Hello. My name is Maggie. I'm back to repeat my speech because it didn't seem to make a difference. I will keep repeating my speech until I'm heard. I identify as non-binary and am a past student of the CUSD School District. I'm also part of the Jewish community. I'd like to discuss two extremely important issues that are impacting our schools. One, the hate speech directed at Asians, Jews, African-Americans, and the LGBTQ+ community. And two, the exclusion of students that identify as neither male nor female or who don't fit outdated gender stereotypes. Swastikas, racial slurs, and other hate speech have been present at our schools and impact students negatively. I saw this exclusion firsthand as I often felt left out and like I did not belong at every school. I felt this way because I'm part of the LGBTQ+ community and part of the Jewish community. Some examples of this exclusion are the father-daughter dance during Christmas and Easter time, when there were Christmas-only programs and Easter-only programs during school. And teachers would ask us only about Christmas presents or Easter celebrations when we returned to school. I feel like our public schools need to be more intolerant of discrimination, hate, and exclusion. Our schools need to learn to love and accept everyone equally. Everyone in Carmel knows that not enough is being done. The dance and carnival at River needs to be exclusive of all. The multi-week Christmas activities and dress-up days at every school need to include Hanukkah and other holidays. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Number 85, please.
Hello. Hello. My name is Sierra. I'm in seventh grade. When I was in fourth grade, a kindergarten teacher asked me and my Jewish friend to talk to her class about Hanukkah. When we got there, she told the class that we were Israelis. I believed her because she kept telling them that I was Israeli. Later, I learned that my mom talked to her for a long time earlier that morning that I am not Israeli. My mom said that no one in our family is Israeli. Jewish is not the same as Israeli, and we are only American. So the teacher knew I was not Israeli, but she told the entire class I was Israeli to teach the kids I'm not American just because I celebrate Hanukkah. After I talked about Hanukkah, the teacher made the kids fill out a workbook called Holidays Around the World. My mom got a copy, so let me read parts of it to you. Children around the world celebrate holidays in many different ways. In Australia, it is summer during Christmas. In Russia, babushka visits them with gifts for Christmas. In Canada, skiing, ice skating, and hockey are popular activities around Christmas time. Children like to make Christmas cards. In England, children call Santa Father Christmas. They decorate Christmas trees and sing carols. In the Netherlands, children leave their shoes out for Father Christmas to fill with treats. In France, children call Santa Père Noël. They like to sing Christmas carols. In Greenland, it is very close to the North Pole. It is very cold. They call Santa Father Christmas. In Sweden, children celebrate a holiday called Santa Lucia Day. That is another Christmas holiday. In Mexico, children have a nine-day celebration, Feliz Navidad. That means Merry Christmas. In Italy, children wait for La Bifana to bring them gifts. That is also for Christmas. In Germany, children love to decorate and eat gingerbread houses. That is for Christmas. In India, children celebrate Diwali. In Israel, children celebrate Hanukkah. In American, in America, some children celebrate Kwanzaa. In the USA, I celebrate Christmas by, and then the kids have to fill in the blank. The workbook gives no options for students to celebrate Diwali, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, or any other holiday. They have to celebrate Christmas. The workbook that I saw years ago is the same one being used today in the kindergarten classes. Thank you for letting me share my experience when I was at River.
Thank you. Number 86, please.
Hi. My name is... Hi. My name is Rich. What I am going to say is true. Not all Americans celebrate Christmas. Americans celebrate different holidays. My friends are Jewish, Muslim, Sikh, Buddhists, and other cultures. We want to be included too. When I was in kindergarten, my teacher would say to me almost every day, "Christmas is almost here. Santa will bring you presents." That's not true. Santa is not even real. I believe my teacher. She lied. I'm now in third grade. My teacher tells me to remind him about Christmas festivals at school, but he never asks me to remind him about Hanukkah. I get autographs from him just for wearing Christmas red and green, but I don't get autographs just for wearing Hanukkah blue and white. What I say about holidays around the world is true. Children around the world celebrate holidays in many different ways. In Australia, it's summer during Hanukkah. In Russia, they make an ice menorah every year to celebrate Hanukkah. In Canada, skiing, ice skating, and hockey are popular activities around Hanukkah time. Children like to make Hanukkah cards. In England, children eat fried foods for Hanukkah. They light a menorah and sing Hanukkah songs. In France, children like to sing Hanukkah songs. Greenland is very close to the North Pole. It is cold. They light Hanukkah candles... Greenland is very close to the North Pole. It is cold. They light Hanukkah candles early. In Mexico, children light candles for eight nights, Feliz Hanukkah. In Italy, families save a special candle to light the Hanukkah menorah. In Israel, children put the menorahs outside in glass boxes. In the USA, I celebrate Hanukkah by helping the Carmel city mayor light the menorah. Thank you for hearing my holidays around the world.
Thank you so much. Number 87, please.
I'm a bit taller, but not much. Hi, my name is Calla, and I go to Carmel High School. I'm here to discuss the district's allowance of swastikas and other hate speech. The Carmel administration knows about the scary amount of racism at my school that has been going on for many years, because it has been reported by the Sam Piper in 2018 and again in 2021. But all we received was an unhelpful five-minute spiel in English class. The five-minute spiel just said that hate speech was happening and that the consequences would be suspension and possibly expulsion. Then they quickly left. The racism has not stopped or even decreased. It is obvious that this five-minute talk was useless. Cameras outside of the bathroom are not going to find any offenders, so there are no penalties. It has been happening at my school for many years. When the Sam Piper reported the problem with swastikas three or four years ago, the article said, "Due to the anonymity of the perpetrator, no disciplinary action can be taken. No students have been reprimanded for the incidents this fall, nor has there yet been a school-wide discussion." Well, that might as well have been a news article from today. There are no school-wide discussions and no punishments. The school district hasn't even put out a statement reprimanding the hate speech or saying that hate speech isn't tolerated in Carmel schools. It feels to me and other students like the silence is tacit approval. The only way to truly combat racism is to teach students why discrimination is wrong. We don't have any curriculum that teaches against antisemitism or other bigotry. If we don't teach against it, we might as well be teaching that it is right. The Anti-Defamation League partners with school districts and provides them a K through 12 anti-hate curriculum. I and other students want this change to happen. We want to pair with a well-respected anti-bigotry organization. We want anti-hate curriculum in our schools, starting at a young age and through graduation. We don't want racism. We want acceptance. Thank you for hearing my concerns and my ideas on how to address this problem.
Thank you. Number 88, please.
For years, I have spoken against hate. Starting in kindergarten, children falsely learned that Jews are Israelis, Americans are Christian. Using worksheets from a self-described "Jesus-loving mom," a Christian-biased world is depicted. It's so prejudicial that Greenland, with only 50,000 people, is included, yet China, with 1.5 billion, many Buddhist, excluded. Pakistan, with 230 million, almost exclusively Muslim, excluded. And Japan, with 125 million, 80% Shinto, excluded. Israel, having no official religion, is both mischaracterized as Jewish-only and with American-only traditions. The month-long lesson ends with a bigoted fill-in-the-blank. In the USA, I celebrate Christmas by. Nelson Mandela said, "People must learn to hate, and if they can learn to hate, they can be taught to love." But we aren't teaching love. Christmas colors earn autographs. Hanukkah colors don't. Anonymous gift exchanges must be wrapped in Christmas paper. After complaining, my child was told to mark themselves Jewish by using Hanukkah paper, a shocking suggestion not unsimilar to racist badges throughout history. Anything not Christmas is banned from the Santa Claus parade during school hours on a public street, despite First Amendment guarantees otherwise. The school even had the chutzpah to suggest that I fashion my menorah into an ornament to decorate their Christmas tree. Such hate is all school-approved. A federal judge, seeing only a fraction of its evidence, described it as "very serious and particularly troubling." Instead of stopping it, the superintendent defended it. The district has had a problem with swastikas and hate speech for years. Are we going to blame the inclusive high school staff, led by informed Principal Lyons, or the welcoming middle school staff, led by enlightened Principal Morgan? I surely hope not. The hate was taught in a school that portrayed Jews as Israeli infiltrators and deceivingly said, "Real Americans celebrate Christmas with Christmas colors, Santa visits, Christmas songs, and Christmas trees with Christian symbols." District-taught-hate graffiti these swastikas. Benjamin Franklin said, "Justice will not be served until those who are unaffected are as outraged as those who are." I am demanding outrage from each of you. That every employee finally receives mandatory paid anti-bigotry training, that curriculum treats different races fairly, and that school-sponsored programs are inclusive. Such simple requests have been attacked so far. District leaders cruelly tried to silence me by wrongly reframing my stance against hate as harassing staff or disrupting school. The superintendent went as far as requesting a sheriff presence at the school's Christmas-only events, falsely reporting a disruptive parent when none existed. My response to these bullies: They won't deter me from doing the right thing. It will not deter me from doing the work that needs to be done for staff and students. I'm not scared by bullies. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 89, please.
Martin Luther King's December 5, 1955, speech about Rosa Parks' arrest in the Deep South is over 70 years old. I am dismayed that his words are just as true today as the situation at hand. Using almost entirely his words. We are here in a specific sense because of swastikas and other hate speech. We are here because we are determined to get the situation corrected. The situation is not new. The problem has existed for endless years. For many years now, minorities in Carmel have been inflicted with the paralysis of crippling fear in schools and our district. On so many occasions, minorities have been intimidated and humiliated and impressed, oppressed, because of the sheer fact that they were minorities. I don't have time this evening to go into the history of these numerous cases. Many of them are now lost in the thick fog of oblivion, but at least one stands before us with glaring dimensions. Just the other month, on December 15, to be exact, the Sam Piper reported on swastikas and the need for anti-hate curriculum. The district leaders would have us believe that their hands are clean. But I want you to know this evening that hate is taught and condoned at our schools. I speak with legal authority. Not that I have any legal authority, but I speak with legal authority behind me that the law prohibits the discrimination testified to by my children today. Right here in the Carmel School District, when the history books are written in the future, someone will have to say, "There lived a race of people, a minority people, a people who had the moral courage to stand up for their rights, and thereby they injected a new meaning into the veins of history and civilization." When the history books are written about here, we ask that this board, this city, this district, commit to the most basic, basic actions. Over two years ago, the Anti-Defamation League, whose whole mission is to bring about an America where those who are some viewed as different are not targets of discrimination and threats, but are equal and worthy of a place of the American dream. That same ADL offered to work on multiple occasions with the former superintendent and with the school district, only to continuously be rebuffed. Their offers were straight-out disregarded. Instead, the problems of swastikas and hate speech has existed and persisted without action. It is time for action before the ugly face of hatred rears its head again. And so I ask just the simplest action to record in the history books and change our future here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number 90, please. Number 90. 91. 91. 92.
I have to say I'm overwhelmed by what I've just heard. I'm just completely overwhelmed. I can't believe it. Can't believe it. I came here to talk about stadium lights. My name is Mal Schwartz. I've been a resident of Carmel for about three years now. My wife and I spent 14 months looking for the ideal place to live. And we found this wonderful place up on Outlook Drive with a fabulous view of Point Lobos, looking over the high school at the ocean. And I can't compose myself to talk about that because of what I've just heard. But I'm gonna try. I have, we, we're, you may, it may seem to many people that everybody in Carmel is wealthy and has a lot of money. And I probably overextended myself to move to Carmel because I met my wife and Esalen, a big sir, and we fell in love with this area. And I will tell you that those stadium lights will make it hard for me to ever recoup the investment that I've made in buying this home and the upgrades that I've made so that we could enjoy our later years in this community. And that's all I could say.
Thank you. Number 93. 93. 94.
Hi, I'm Fran Dillard. I'm also here to speak about the stadium lights, but also feel it's inappropriate, actually, to talk about it when I've seen such bravery of people coming forth and really talking about the topics. While I'm pleased to hear the superintendent's update, I think the bigger takeaway for me coming here today is it's unfortunate that everybody that is here today really feels that they need to shout in order to get resolutions from this group. So whether it's leadership here at the board, whether it's leadership at the school or at the superintendent, the common themes that I feel is everything gets bottled up and it comes to this stop. And it's a lot of anger and disruption that there's no resolution. It goes back to what is effective leadership and what are the roles that you guys need to take in order to resolve things from the community. So while I'm pleased that the draft ERI has been postponed, I think my biggest takeaway is how are you guys building relationships with the communities? How are you bringing people along on any and all issues? How are you breaking down walls? I think, I've lived here in this community for 25 years. I have never, ever attended a board meeting. But every time I would read the paper, consistently I hear the dysfunction of what is happening with students, parents, and what is happening with the leadership at the school. So I really urge you, regardless of whether it's the stadium lights or all these topics that people are bringing to the thing, is how do you guys build a culture of community, journey, inclusion, and resolution? People are looking to you guys to play a role in breaking things down between what is happening at the staff and what is happening with the superintendent, what's happening in the school, and their problems. I just hear a lot of problems. I guess I just don't hear a lot of solutions. So specifically for the stadium lights, please do not wait until the springtime. I would encourage you not to use language to be divisive of residents against students and really break down the walls and open the communications. We've asked for multiple sessions of can we talk to the students? How do we build global citizens? How do we work together? I mean, those are definitions for me of the community. So throwing away my three-minute speech and I too am moved with folks who are just coming up and pouring their hearts out and really just asking, what does good community work look like and how do we work together for abundance of problems? There's just a lot of hate right now, and there's a lot of anger, and there's a lot of frustrations because there's no solutions. So don't let it wait for folks to get to the point where they're shouting in order for you guys to play a role that you guys were elected to do. So, that's it.
Thank you. Number 95, please.
Hello, everyone. Unfortunately, I didn't have time to write a speech, so I'll do my best to pour out my heart. I lived in three different countries, and I'm from Italy, actually a small island of Sardinia. We lived until we are about 110 years old in my island, so we are very conscious of what we put into our bodies. And when it comes to the mandate, we are not ready yet to take the decision to inject our children. I'm not saying no right now. I'm not against it for us, the adults. But for the children, I don't have enough data on a long-term risk on a developing body. And so I would like you to give us the right of the freedom of medical choice for our kids. You have the power to do that. All I hear is like racism, discrimination. My eight-year-old was discriminated for not having the vaccine, like at the end of November, when the vaccine just came out. And I just don't understand it. I just don't understand like what you guys are doing to help us fix this problem. We've seen emails about swastikas, graffiti, the use of the N-word. Besides now, we are adding the discrimination of the vaccine, so now we have another problem. And I mean, all we are asking, all of us, is to remember, we're all brothers and sisters. We're all the same. We don't need to judge each other for their choices. What works for me and my family and my children does not work for yours. I respect your choice of inject your child, but I'm not ready to inject mine, so you should respect me. We have always abide by the rules. I've always volunteered. I'm one of those people that if I have my last penny and somebody's starving, I give my last penny to that somebody. I don't look away. So I'm very kind-hearted, and I believe in God. And in Europe, we look at America as this big country of freedom. And now that I'm here for 12 years, this is worse than Italy. And we're like very mind-spoken, and you know that. And I thought we were racist in my country. But the level of acceptance in here, it's like mind-blowing. Like you do not accept anything different than what you are taught and than what you believe. So I ask you to possibly create a position for somebody that can teach our students about acceptance in every possible level, whether it's religion, gender, whatever it is. But you need to create a program that teaches our kids that everybody in the world comes out the same, and we all live the same. We're just passing through life right now. What are you gonna leave? So when your last day of life, thinking about what you've done through your life, how are you gonna see you in this time of life, when we're asking and begging for your help? And all we get is censorship, sheriffs, and all that. Tell me, who do we look for? Who do we ask? Thank you. I appreciate your hard work, by the way.
Thank you. Number 96, please.
Hi, my name is Michael Olm. First of all, I want to take the opportunity to thank you who are here. First of all, I want to take the opportunity to thank you, uh, who are here tonight and who've had to listen to a great deal of passion about the community. Um, I was reflecting on the fact that, that when I heard this meeting take place, as all of you went through your updates and reports, that there are a lot of thank-yous, and I want to echo those to the people who are doing their best to keep our children safe and to keep the school functioning. I lived in Vienna, Austria for two years, and last year they made the decision to do in-school, uh, in-person, uh, schooling throughout the entire year. And our school was shut down for about two and a half months during that time because it just wasn't doable. So I want to say that I recognize the work that's being put into that, and I do want to thank you for it. Um, I have heard from people who've suggested that, um, we need to ignore the California health guidelines. I want to make sure that there are people here who speak their support of those guidelines and keeping children safe. I have heard it suggested that there's some sort of discrimination going on against people who choose not to get vaccinated or who have concerns. I'm not in a position to speak on that, save to say that I think there's a very big difference between people who are discriminated because of the color of their skin or their heritage versus people who make a choice not to, not to engage in the medical process. Um, finally, I would like to say that I had not intended to speak on this tonight, but I have listened to my friends and, uh, companions in the Jewish community speak of the pain and the hurt that they have experienced. And I recognize that that pain and that hurt is not unique to this school. Living in Austria, we visited the Jewish History Museum there, and, um, I, I don't think I can add in-depth what we saw there and make everyone feel what we saw there. But it, um, is disheartening to see. I hope we can speak out and educate our children and, um, speak out in favor of inclusion and make sure that the diverse voices in our community get heard. And, um, as painful as it may be to hear criticism tonight, I hope you also hear that people are motivated by a desire to do better, and I think there is the opportunity to work with the people in our community to make that happen. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Melissa Ullam. I spoke in the last board meeting about broadly adopting a diversity, equity, and inclusion officer in the district, uh, to support many diversity issues across the school. Um, but I didn't get into the instance that prompted me to do that, mostly because I felt a little nervous and a little shy and a little private about my children. I have two children at Carmel River Elementary School. Um, we are not Jewish, um, and my children are huge fans of Santa Claus. Um, on the walk to the Santa Claus beat on the, on the street, my son overheard two other children in his class, um, also second grade, speak, um, extremely negatively about Hanukkah, um, saying that it was stupid and that it was bad. Um, he felt ashamed that he did not interrupt that discussion, but when he came home, he told me about it and felt very sorry for the event. Um, as a person who has not faced a lot of discrimination in my life, I didn't really know what to do, but I came to the board meeting on December fifteenth, which was unfortunately disrupted by anti-maskers and anti-vaxers, to try to speak about this issue. Um, I reported it the same day to the principal of Carmel River Elementary School, and this issue hasn't, has not been resolved or, or managed yet. Um, I'm concerned that Carmel River is at the elementary school level tolerating, um, and by the sounds of other parents' experiences, perhaps even teaching, um, really negative values to our children. Um, I suspect there are a lot of parents and staff, uh, who are like me that maybe have not faced discrimination broadly, and it feels uncomfortable to address it for the first time. I am not sure that I handled it myself the best way, but because the principal has not, um, provided any resources or education to teach students otherwise, I would like to ask you, the board, um, to use your power to engage with an anti-discrimination organization like the Anti-Defamation League. After many emails and many days wringing my hands, I felt I had to report this as an instance of hate to the Anti-Defamation League. And in response, they have offered to provide free resources to the district and free training for staff, students, on how to be good allies and prevent discrimination and hate on campus. I'm not very aware of what's happening at the middle school or the high school level, but I do want to make sure it includes elementary school-level students because I would never have thought it, but yes, in fact, it is happening at the elementary school level, and we really should address it. Thank you again for your time and your understanding. I know it must be hard to hear all of this, but I, like my husband said, we lived in Austria, and we often asked ourselves, what would we have done? And so today I want to stand up and show what I will do to prevent any hate in my community, because I do love this community quite a bit. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment section of the agenda this evening. I'd like, on behalf of the Board of Education, to extend our deep and sincere thanks to all of you who had the courage to speak tonight, and, uh, let us know your thoughts on specific topics. Thank you so much for joining us this afternoon. We'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Item Two. This is our consent calendar. This is a bundle of a number of items that the board will act upon together in one motion through the use of the consent calendar. These items are routine items deemed to be non-controversial for which board discussion is not anticipated and for which the superintendent recommends approval. There will be no discussion of these items prior to the vote unless any members of the board request specific items to be removed. So with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Board President Sarah Hines.
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur.
Yes.
Board Member Ann Marie Rosen.
Yes.
Board Member Seaberry Nachbar.
Yes.
Board Member Carla Palestrini. All right, Agenda Item Three. These are our action discussion and information items this evening. Agenda Item Three-A, this is district-wide mental health wellness presentation delivered by Steve Gonzalez. Thank you for being here, Steve. We all appreciate it. Um, as everybody knows, that Steve is our Director of Special Education, and I'd just like our Board of Education to know that he's here this evening to provide an update on our wellness centers, uh, both the high school and the middle school. And I believe Steve will be presenting, and then he has his team with him to answer any questions that we may have at the end of the presentation. So with that, I thank you for being here, Steve, and take it away.
Thank you. Again, uh, my name's Steve Gonzalez, Director of Special Education, and I want to acknowledge everyone for being here tonight and the team. What I'm gonna do is I have about twenty-one slides, so I'm gonna go through them as efficiently as I can, and then at the end of the presentation, if you have any questions for the team that I'll introduce, uh, you could ask questions that you may have, okay? So as you, um, are, you are well aware, this is an important topic, and I just want to acknowledge the support that you have provided, uh, this past year as we navigated through COVID. But it's also a time for celebration, and I want to share with you some of the, some of the work that's being done at the school sites, district-wide, both at the elementary level, middle school, and the high school. So if we could go to the next slide. So what you'll see tonight is, um, you're, you're gonna see an approach that is a tiered approach, and there's not one intervention that can handle each challenge that we might face. So what we are doing is we're expanding our toolbox to be able to address both proactively minor concerns, as well as when the concerns are more intense, we have the avenues to then access mental health supports and social emotional services for students who might need those supports. Go to the next slide. So essentially, the next slide addresses the why, and as you can see, when kids have act-
Steve, I'm sorry, are you on the implementation or the pyramid?
I'm sorry, I am on. I can't see the screen. Implementation-
Implementation, okay.
Implementation, yeah.
Thank you.
So with the implementation slide, I really wanted to put this in context. Um, prior to COVID, as you can see, one, uh, one of the five children have a diagnosable mental illness, and so we were already in a crisis at that point in time, really nationwide. When COVID hit, it really exasperated those concerns, and, thank you so much. And after getting input from educational partners and meeting with students, we've identified, we identified mental health as a significant concern, and we took action. You could see from, from June first through the present, we're in the process of scaling up this year and really building the infrastructure to support the continuum and the mental health supports district-wide. Go to the next slide, please. So if you take a snapshot at a thousand-degree or a thousand-foot level and you look down at the district, what you'll see is district-wide, the supports at every level of the school system. Tier one essentially means that we're building a positive and school-wide, uh, culture within the school system, and that includes both, excuse me, that includes both the students, staff, the families, the whole organization, as well as the community. And I've listed under staffing some of those roles that are connected to each of those, um, activities within the tiers. For instance, tier one, on the, it would be the right-hand side, under the interventions, those are just some of the examples of what's being provided and implemented in the schools. Um, for instance, at CCDC, you'll recognize the pyramid model, and again, that's at the preschool level. At the high school level, again, uh, Principal Lyons and his team has, have initiated the EQ schools, and that's really, really looking at how we as an adult can understand students' needs and better address their needs in a proactive manner and create a positive school culture within the classroom and non-classroom, outside of the classroom. When kids need more supports, tier two, that's when we're wanting to be proactive and identify the concerns and then address them as soon as possible. And you could see that really involves the coordination with our school counselors at every school, and they're really essential in being able to work with the teams at the school site, as well as the clinicians. And there might be some overlap, so then, as the wellness centers are coming onboard, we are really fortunate to be able to have the wellness centers so that any student at a school site, at the middle and high school, can, depending on their need, they can go to the wellness center and get that support. If it's more intensive, then they identify those needs and they provide more intensive supports as appropriate. And then we also have continued partnerships with Monterey County Behavioral Health for needs that are significant, um, again, intensive, and more ongoing. We can go to the next slide, please. So now I wanted to provide you with a, a brief overview of each school site and how we're supporting the schools with the current clinicians that we're bringing onboard, and I'm not sure if Ashley Robinson is here? So Ashley does have her, she has her PPS in school social work, so we're very fortunate to have her in the district. She has significant experience supporting students, also in families in the home, and she has a wealth of experience, um, with connecting families to resources if needed. Right now, she is supporting all the elementary school, the three elementary schools, CCDC and Carmel Valley High School, and she has about, uh, fifteen students that she's seen at the elementary level, and then all the students at Carmel Valley High School. In February, we're also gonna be bringing on Danielle Wells, and she is a licensed social worker with expertise in suicide prevention, which, uh, would be a great benefit for, for any district, but we're lucky to have her come onboard in February, so we're anticipating that. Go to the next slide, please. So at the middle school, I believe tonight we have, we have Suzie Bajari. Raise your hand, Suzie. And we also have Farah Reese as the outreach coordinator within the wellness center at the middle school. And both, both of the wellness centers are really grounded in the values of safety, compassion, trust, as well as respect. And that, what they have done is amazing work within a short amount of time. Suzie came onboard, I believe in September. And so, we can go to the next slide, please? And so as you can see, in that amount of, in that amount of time, they've been able to touch nine-hundred-and-thirty students. And these are different levels of needs in supporting students that have had access, either going to the center or, uh, Suzie pushing out into the classrooms or the schools, uh, different areas of the school and meeting with students. And you'll also have the breakdown of some of the grade levels for each of this, each of the, um, for the students in that grade level. For the reasons for the visit, the, it doesn't tell you the why, so it tells you what they're experiencing. And so those conversations would take place beyond just that initial visit, and they would determine, you know, does a student need additional support and resources? And again, I'll have, uh, Suzie share more at the end of the presentation if you have any questions for her. Go to the next slide, please. At the high school, we have Lauren Capano. Lauren, I don't know if she's here. There, there's Lauren. And we have Pam Sullivan, the outreach coordinator. And we also have Lorena Cruz Rodriguez, who I don't think she's unable to be-
The dog is sick.
Oh, okay. Her dog is sick, so. Um, so Lorena and Lauren and Pam, they're a great team at the high school. They've created the, um, the structures of the wellness center along with the collaboration with, uh, Principal Lyons. And what they've created is a tiered approach again. So if a student needs to decompress, um, any student could go to the wellness center and have the opportunity to decompress for fifteen minutes. If it's identified that there's even more need that's, uh, or more support that's needed for a student, then they, then Lauren takes that opportunity to meet with the student and determine if the student needs that support and meets with them for either, uh, two to three sessions, and then if even more supports needed for a short-term amount of time, four to six sessions, then Lorena may take that opportunity to continue to meet with that student. And the goal and opportunity is always to give strategies and, and provide emotional support, um, self-awareness for the students, and get them back into the classroom so that they're able to have a healthy mind, healthy heart, and to be able to access the, the instruction. Go to the next slide, please? So for the high school, you can see here that they've had over one thousand visits from students. And again, the reasons for the visits, you can see right there, stress and anxiety. That's a consistent concern that we're seeing district-wide, depression, anxiety, uh, that we're also seeing in other indicators. And next slide, please? And at the high school, when a student does need two to three sessions, um, and Lauren's able to see the students, um, there have been eighty-one students that have accessed that support. And with Lorena, our licensed marriage and family therapist, there have been about seventy-two students who have accessed the additional sessions if needed. Um, you could see ninety-three percent have reported feeling better, um, and that their, their needs have been met, and out of two-hundred-and-nineteen students, there has been a, a positive, a favorable trend when they go to the center and when they leave the center with their mood, uh, being improved. Next slide, please? And so just getting, taking a snapshot of a, of a random sampling of thirty-seven students, about twenty-five of the students out of the thirty-seven have indicated that they have learned a strategy. And so helping to build their skills, helping to self-regulate, um, and having that self-awareness. And you can also see that seventy-six percent of the, of the thirty-seven students, again, it isn't just a snapshot, but that they have, um, an overall positive experience when they do go to the center. We can go to the next slide, please? In addition, we're fortunate to have Carisolus. Carisolus is not an actual direct service. What Carisolus does is it's available free for anyone in our community, and they can go to our website, and they can get linked with an individual from Carisolus who's trained in managing the system. So they look at the insurance, they look at the network within the insurance, and they're able to connect families, youth, um, anyone in our community to get connected to a mental health provider. It could either be, uh, virtual, or it could be in-person. And next slide, please? And you could see some of the data from Carisolus specifically. There have been about a hundred and two individuals that have actually gone into the system, and of those a hundred and two individuals- And of those a hundred and two individuals, you can see about, over sixty percent of the individuals were the youth in our district, in our community that proceeded to try to have that connection with the mental health provider. Next slide, please. And for those going into Carisolus, again, a common indicators, anxiety and depression is what we're seeing as the most concerned. And so again, that's something we definitely want to address and we want to look at to be able to support our community. Next slide, please. So we always want to ask ourselves, how are we going to know if we're implementing and we're action planning to the best possible, as best possible that we can? And so we are working with what's called SHAPE. And it's a tool, it's a school mental health, a self-assessment tool from the University of Oregon and they're one of the national, national centers for school-based mental health. And they get funding directly from the federal government, so this is a free self-assessment tool for us. But it's really our quality assurance tool that helps us action plan for implementing effective and evidence-based practices around mental health in schools. We could go to the next slide, please. And we can go to the next slide, thank you. And so.
Steve, I'm sorry, what slide are you on?
Oh, sorry, I'm on the Carmel Middle School SHAPE and you'll see mastery progressing, emerging.
The mental health quality progress report?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Following along.
So we took our initial pre-assessment with this tool and you could see this does help us action plan and to be able to implement around the areas that are both emerging. And this is really for the sites. It's not for data or information that we send to the state. This is for the sites, for us to work with the data and identify what are the things that we want to prioritize and work on in the next zero to six months, seven to twenty-four months, to be able to ensure that we're building a comprehensive mental health system at our schools. And then we keep going back to the action planning to be able to continue that, that hard work. And so you could see here, an example might be, at the middle school, we might want to look at mapping and our resources or we might want to identify early intervention practices. And we, and we talk about that, we dialogue and then we set a plan and we put a plan in place. And the next slide, please. And at the high school, we took our first self-assessment as well. And again, you could see here, it identifies teaming, it identifies needs assessment. Basically what that is, it's a universal screener. So it looks at the possibility of looking at a screener that can help identify students early and we can be proactive in, in addressing their needs. And it also looks at tier one and tier two, tier three supports within that continuum. And we could go to the next slide, please. And so right now, just as a start, we are at the bronze level and they re, they rate each of the schools and the districts as you continue to go from emerging to progressing and mastery. And eventually we could get to gold, but that's just a little temperature check for us as we navigate and implement the domain areas. And next slide, please. And so for some of our next steps that we have identified, we want to continue to support our, our therapists and our clinicians and as well as our staff. And we also want to continue to look at a universal screener. This is an evidence-based approach for, for mental health in schools and it allows schools, much like we do with reading or we do with hearing and vision, we take a little temperature check of, of how a student's doing socio-emotionally and then we work around that and we identify if a student is needing more than what they're receiving with the tier one services and/or the school climate and the culture within the school and then we address it. We also want to continue to look at using the self-assessment tool so that we can sustain and ensure that we're implementing with the best practices as best as possible. And the next slide, please. And so I know I went through this very fast, I just want to end with the message of hope. And so I wanted to share with you a resource for the community. It's CalHope.org and this is implemented and provided by the state free of charge and it has a wealth of resources. So I just wanted to share this with you. And I also wanted to acknowledge the staff, the school counselors, the clinicians and the students. Prior to COVID, at the middle school, they had a focus group with the students and this was one of the high priorities that they, that they noted in that focus group. They wanted a wellness center, a place to go to that felt safe, that they can meet with a trusted adult to navigate through some of their concerns that they might have. So we did take action. And so with that, I wanted to open it up for questions and we have also a school counselor, Captain Cooper from, from Captain Cooper, Lizette. And so she's also here to answer any questions that you might have and, and any of the other team members.
Great, thank you so much, Steve and team, for putting this presentation together. It was really thorough and I know it's been a long time coming because the board has asked a number of questions in previous meetings that were, that were definitely answered in this presentation. So I'd like to thank all of you. I have a couple of questions myself, but I'll kick it off to the, my four, my fellow board members and for questions from here. So I'll, I'll save my questions. Do you want to go ahead, Seaberry? Okay.
I do want to say, I'm Suzie, I'm therapist over at the wellness center. And Steve's been amazing at leading our teams and making sure that we can run with things right away. You know, I got there in early September and we're running that day already. And, and also, Steve, you're leading amazingly and checking our efficacy and making sure things are working. So thank you very much.
Before you start, Seaberry, I just want to applaud all of you guys have done
Yes.
phenomenal things with what you've been given this last couple of years.
Thanks.
I want to honor you. You guys are a huge impact to our students and clearly the results speak for themselves, the number of kids that seek you. And just thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you guys do. We're really, really blessed to have the teams we have, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I couldn't agree more. Thank you guys for everything that you're doing. It is so impactful and meaningful and we're, we're just so excited to have you all here today. So thank you for everything, really.
Thank you, it's a team effort.
All right, thank you guys. Okay, Seaberry, I'll kick it off and we have a whole team to answer questions, so.
And I do have a couple, but I think they should be pretty quick responses. And it, and I think the, my number of questions reflects how excited I am for the, what you guys are doing. Not in any way negative at all.
No, bring it, yeah, it's such a privilege.
So I'm, I'm interested, actually I have two questions that are a little bit similar. So first, I'm interested in what kind of training you regularly receive and how that's decided. But for example, like if you were to have multiple students come in that were feeling discriminated against and that was actually showing an increase and you were seeing more and more students coming, coming in, how, how do you react to that? What's the process to say, okay, this is obviously an issue? How are we going to do this? And then what's the, so that's the reactive part, but what's the proactive part in terms of handling that? So is there a system in place where then you would put curriculum, you know, you'd work with the, with Flaze and instructional part to make sure that this was being addressed? Because you're seeing it, you're seeing the end result of it. Instead of being reactive, how are you proactive?
Yes. I'll take a stab at the first part. So the licensed professionals, which is Lauren, Lorena, myself and soon to be another person named Claudia on February seventh at the middle school and Ashley's building her license and is there, oh, and Danielle, that's coming. Splendid team. And we, since we're licensed, it's mandated anyway that we keep up our own licenses. And so with that comes continuing education credits. Very excitingly, I, I think it's either building or it's been approved. Where some of us are going to be able to attend a dialectical behavioral therapeutic seminar, I think a set of days, right, in April, is it? Thank, oh, good lord, is it really?
Yes.
Oh, it's like next week or something. It's so exciting. So that's fabulous. So thank you so much for supporting that because that's a big part of us staying attuned. Also, Steve, for example, just sent us a little email about some Zoom trainings, attuning ourselves to, what was that thing? It was some really great stuff, just as far as trauma-informed and appropriately attuned responses. I do want to say for the middle school, there is an advisory of kids who want to support each other with people that are feeling disparaged or how to support each other, especially how to stave off the negative, direct negative things happening, the whispers, the, the things that happen in middle school anyway, but also the dark or twisty stuff. And I know John Casper, you know, the admin is starting that this Friday. It's a really great group of kids. They're amazing students, kind of, sort of picked by, you know, teachers and peers. It's going to be a really catalyzing thing, I think. These kids are respected and kind and it's going to be a great team. So that's one aspect where we can go to kind of sort things out, brainstorm how to bring things to the head. And at the middle school level, again, you know, I feel really grateful because the academic counselors are amazing, the leadership team, which is the kids classes taught by Liz Wells, they are very attuned. In a moment, they'll turn it around and ask if they can hold, you know, like a Wednesday, big old meeting, I forget what Dan Morgan calls them, but the big old, what, school-wide, and address issues that need to come up, whether it's cleaning up your own lunch garbage or kindness and inappropriate levels of, you know, word usage, things like that. Very responsive, but that's my perspective of the middle school, so go ahead, you guys.
Okay, Pam Sullivan. For on the high school level, we have already, we're very aware of what has been going on. So in our levels of what ends up happening, admin alerts us, Lauren and Lorena, whoever's available will end up talking and doing, having a conversation with those students. We've already helped form two different groups of kids for LGBT and for racism that they have come in and asked us to help facilitate. We have found teachers to be their counselor, to be have the space and the room to do that. What else have we done? We, huh? Yeah, the ethnic awareness club. We are working in our SHAPE program right now. We are trying to do our planning from what Steve has done and working with John and we're coming up with ways. And I totally agree with, I think as our team would say, we definitely need that backup support to help with that education, hundred and ten percent. And we feel that we've been meeting with staff members too, per departments, to get an idea of what's going on in the classrooms and what's happening on our campus. And they all know how to reach us, they are very good at reaching out to us and we are wanting to get into the classrooms to help educate and do things with that too. So any materials that we could use and we help facilitate those things, that would be amazing for us.
Great, thank you for that. And just, sorry, just a couple more questions. So I know that you have students involved in, which is great, I love that aspect. Have you guys thought about having students involved to help with the outreach, to help facilitate that component? Because I did notice that it's the majority Caucasian or that are self-identifying as Caucasian and so it'd be great to see if we can expand that a little bit to make sure that all people feel like this is a place for them.
So Lauren and Lorena, Lorena's our new addition who to our SEL team. I've been on the SEL team since last year. So we have kids that we have pulled in a variety of different grade levels, different ethnicities and everything, and they are now part of our SEL team. And so we also are working with Ronnie from EQ Schools and we have brought in parents, we've brought in kids, we're working on mission statements, we're doing a lot of that stuff. So there's a lot of positive that's happening along that route.
And then the last question is, on one of the slides, you had like anxiety, depression, you know, a list. Are those, is that open-ended? I mean, do kids get to select why they're coming in? Or is that kind of a predetermined, check the box kind of thing?
So both our teams do it a little differently, but generally there's a check-in computer plus a wonderful person at the front greeting someone warmly. And they can indicate, sometimes they just say talk, even though they're feeling panic, you know, but they, they can check, you know, what they're feeling or experiencing, ingoing. And then I think your team has exit, exit data too, right, when they leave. And we haven't formed that form yet, but we're, you know, interested in that. We'll ask kids, you know, how you doing? Did this give you any help or do you need something else right now? And if they say they feel relief and they can find resilience and return to school, you know, hopefully for long, long-range health reasons. But I think I've answered that, what was that?
I was just going to say, at the high school, we have the students, when they come in, there's the kiosk that they sign in and it's just more, it's not as specific. And so all of that information is just based on the meetings when they're meeting with us. Because also what's on the list isn't all extensive, so those aren't the only issues, but those are the primary issues that have been addressed. But so they have the opportunities more so when they're meeting with us as opposed to, because initially we actually had a whole list, but we were noticing too, with the interest of time and noticing that they needed to be in class and really wanting to maximize the time that they were with us and decompressing. So where they're just selecting if it's an appointment, if they're here to talk, if they need to decompress, and then if they're selecting an appointment or talking with us. At that moment, that's when we're able to delve deeper and then have self-reported of what the presenting problems are.
Great, thank you so much, thanks for taking the time.
Oh, somebody clap again. Wave your hands in the air.
To piggyback on Seaberry's question, because I, I had the same type of question. I have several questions, but one in particular is the outreach. And are you targeting some kids based on teacher input or parent input? Because they're not seeking you, but someone else in their world is saying, hey, this kid really needs help. What, I wanted to know, what, what does that look like? Because obviously a lot of kids aren't going to seek you because they, you know, are afraid or don't want the help or don't think they need the help. But how do you respond to that?
Yeah, I can say at Carmel High, the vast majority of our students that have come to see us have been self-referred. So we also, that's not our only referral source, but that absolutely is the vast majority so far. We absolutely do have parents as well that will reach out, staff referrals, teachers, really anyone who's concerned, even peers. We'll have peers come in and refer a friend. And so how that looks, it's essentially the same process, whether it's a self-referral or it's from a parent. If a parent, for example, is reaching out to the center, with our wellness center coordinator usually is strictly first with Pam and then scheduling a time for Lorena or myself to then be able to have that conversation with the parent and find out what are the concerns? How can we assist in having a personalized action plan that we'll come up with? And then also being able to provide if, after meeting with the student and if the student's engaged, if it's a higher level of care than we're able to offer within a school setting, being able to also offer community resources to the student and or parent. And so it's individualized, so it's not a one-size-fits-all and so we personalize it based on each need.
That's wonderful.
We also have, when admin, if there's a situation going on with admin, they will call us and say they're bringing someone down. And at that point, we will either assess if the, most of the time, these gals are busy every half hour. That's how many kids we see in a day. And then I'm full with other kids off and on throughout the day too. So it ends up being where we have to cancel some of the appointments and if it's an emergency. So if a parent calls, self-harm, anything like that, of course, we're pulling that kid out of class immediately, talking to them or a teacher reporting that and we've had to do that a couple of times this last week. So it's, the one thing that I learned, that our team feels that we learned when we have been meeting with staff in different departments, we still have three more to go through, that they really have noticed at the beginning, it seemed like everybody was hanging out, they were just using it as an excuse to come. And now they're really seeing, we have closed ranks on how we are dealing with things and getting people in and all of those things are seeing a very positive impact on the kids coming back into class. And they are, I have to say, there's a few teachers that I never thought would be going yay, or like hallelujah, I don't want to, you know. But it's been a really good, and one of our staff members actually said, and we've only, so it's only started since August, that they really feel that the vibe is that we are definitely a piece of campus now and that we've really the fabric of campus and a lot of kids just totally come in, hang out and the relationships are really building and it's really a really cool thing.
That's beautiful. One more question and this might be more for Steve. So clearly this is not a Carmel unified problem, this is a global issue right now. And I know we have a lot of the extra money, the extra money that will take us through 2023. Are you hearing anything that might be coming in the future from the state or the federal government to continue with the level of services we're currently providing? Because clearly they're necessary. So I'm just curious if you're hearing anything that could be coming down the road past 2023?
Yeah, I think, you know, in general, I am hearing, just from a general sense, that there is a lot of interest at the federal level and also at the state level. I think it was, I want to say last spring, at the state level, they were allocating as part of the budget, they were looking at, you know, I don't, I don't have the exact number, but over a million, I think four million specifically for behavioral health. but over a million, I think four million specifically for behavioral health. But how that would be trickled down to the LEA level, the local educational agency level, is something that we would have to look into. I think they're still working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Anne Marie?
Hi, first of all, thank you so very much for being there. I want to tell you, you are a shameful indulgence for me. I've gone twice. I will tell you, it's a wonderful place to go. I did not want to leave. And I was trying to figure out how I could ask more questions so I could stay longer. So my question was really running back to you in particular, the, you know, the staffing of this. We're looking at self-care, making sure that the kids are taken care of. I'm questioning about you self-care and what you're looking to do.
I'm not sure we're really allowed to answer.
No, I'm just, I'm, is there something in the works for an admin to be able to access some help? Teachers and specifically counselors? Because I know that as a counselor, my son is like just inundated. So I'm assuming that you guys are up to your eyeballs and beyond. So I'm just wondering, what are your plans for like, are you planning on doing something specific for self-care, especially for administrators? Who I watch pace back and forth quite a bit on this, trying to figure out what they're going to do?
Should we start with massage?
That is a super gracious question. I'm really excited to hear you ask it. I actually, so I'm, I work till four. You know, I'm kind of eight-hour. And so I have a cushion of time where I plan for the next day or, but I have, the admin and I have chatted lightly about allowing, opening up just for some confidential hangout, debrief. It's a very safe, secure time for staff. You know, two appointments are right there for half an hour or just come and flop on our squishy stuff or whatever, right?
Which is so nice, the squishy stuff.
Yeah, the squishy stuff is good. Come in color and silence, it doesn't matter. But I would, you know, that's great that you guys are asking because we're kind of like, well, let's see if it's okay. Is it allowed? I'm all in, yes, I mean, right? It's a team effort. So, and in addition to that, somebody had asked the word outreach. I'm really excited with the LCSW that we hired, or you guys hired, coming into work with me. We're so thrilled. Farrah's my colleague, and then we get to have Claudia because she is a native Spanish speaker, and that is thrilling to me. We've used Teacher Diaz, who's the translator person. She's amazing, really amazing. But it's going to be great to have somebody with psychology terms. And also Claudia and myself are very, and I don't want to not speak for you guys, but you guys can say it yourself, we're very open to accommodating families that need more outreach, right? And seeing what those needs are, so anyway.
So for us, we also, one of the things I forgot to say is like, we have seen teachers come in and talk. And we've joked about, you know, massage chairs and adult beverage refrigerator and those kind of things. But we, one of the things that we do with our admin and our counselors is all of us, we all get together once a month, and we debrief and do teamwork to be able to talk about kiddos and as a team, working together. And I have the pleasure of working with two amazing counselors. And so we take time once a month to go do our PD at a restaurant and go have an appetizer together. And we sit, we talk and we laugh all day long through things. So they're just, I don't know if you understand, they're just amazing.
No, it's definitely a blessing to be a part of this and an absolute privilege. So we're continuing to look at, continue to outreach as well.
That's great.
I'm going to just say one thing to that end too. We are in the process of hiring an employee benefits specialist. And that is to actually strengthen the outreach that we have to the employees in the district on a more comprehensive scale and not just for health, like medical and dental. It is to actually take a look at how we better support our employees on a larger scale. So.
I like looking at, I like the whole global approach to the district. And you guys are a very, very important part. Admin, teachers, counselors are all very, very important in this whole entire picture. So thank you.
Carl, do you have any questions? I have just, okay.
I'd like to know more about that, specialists we just heard about and how that's structured. That sounds kind of interesting. My comment is, the program is new, and it takes time for programs to become ingrained. And so keep in mind your next steps about what you need to be more successful with what you're doing. And make sure that that's pretty clearly communicated to your site administrators. And back to us, because that's how programs grow. And it's a great start, folks, it really is.
Thank you, Carl. I'm Suzie again. I want to say really thank you because one of our things that we discussed right at the beginning of this year, Lauren, you've been here a lot longer, but was the idea of, this is a simple thing, but with the registration, since we're not doing, we're not providing therapy, diagnosis, treatment, assessment. You know, we're just providing interventions of relief and hopefully caring and then maybe referrals if it's needed. The idea of with registration for an opt-out thing, that would make things so much smoother and quicker, feeling more secure, especially at the younger level when kids aren't of their own consenting age. To inform parents, to inform community, what we provide and the limitations therein, and then also just to see if, right? So, okay.
I just have one last question. My question was, and Pam, thank you for answering it. You didn't even know it was my question. I was going to ask sort of what the vibe or what the thoughts were around having the wellness centers on campuses. And I'm so happy to hear that you said, Pam, that it's really becoming sort of a fabric, part of the fabric of the community and the culture at the high school. So if you want to expand on that, that'd be awesome. But I also want to hear, what is it at the middle school? Because I know the age gap is significant between the, you know, the sixth graders and seniors, right? So how is, how is the wellness center being incorporated and sort of viewed at the middle school? And is it becoming a part of its culture too?
So about the younger ones, you had asked also about how kids come in. Some are self-referred, but because they're younger, right? They're under more the purview of their parents, guardians, and teachers are, they're, I don't, you know, I don't, I just see what I see. Carmel Middle is like a camp community with incredible education for the children. And it's such a communal synergistic experience. So I feel like I have, there's a wellness person over in the industrial arts space. There's a wellness person right at the theater. There's a wellness person over in the PE, you know. And so we are able to, hey, you got this guy? No, I'm going to send him to you for lunch. Instead of that detention, we're going to work on this, you know, controlling our impulses today, you know? Instead of just, you know, anyway, it's just a wonderful wonder for community. I feel like, and I don't want to undersell it, the wellness center and the presence, it's a great privilege to be there. It is, there's always already been something so magical happening at the middle school. It's pretty powerful and beautiful. So I feel grateful because we're just such a lovely team, so.
That's great, thank you.
And we've had the benefit of being open since the first day of school. So we've had a little more. And there, yeah, anyway, it's all good. We had to fight, and I mean, when at first, it was like, oh, you don't want to go there. You're going to talk, you're going to cry, you're going to this, you're going to that, you know, kind of thing. And Mr. Lyons was like, how come there's so much, there's not enough testosterone in here? We need to get some of these boys in. So over time, I have to credit it to Lauren and Lorena for the way that they can bond and talk to the kids. I think part of it has been a benefit because as you guys all know, I've been on that campus for 13 years now. So my role is study hall for five years. The relationships I build, some kids four years in a row, day in and day out. I think that part of it was a big benefit for us also to be able to have that, oh, go see that wacky crazy lady again, you know, kind of thing. So it's just, we've been somehow been able to overcome that. We still have more to do, and we have had more boys coming in. We're just, it's rolling. And yeah, we may need another one in that third room of ours.
That's wonderful, thank you. And I think that's all the questions we had for you. Thank you all so much for everything that you're doing. We appreciate this presentation. All right, moving on to agenda item 3B. This is the ratification of the MOU between Carmel Unified School District and the Association of Carmel Teachers regarding COVID-19 leave.
So we like to believe in our infinite wisdom that we have taken a look at the needs of our employees in this sense and kind of the uptick and had already actually started that conversation and dialogue. So this is just bringing it to fruition with one unit. The other one should be forthcoming at your next meeting. But this is a, an agreement to extend the leave that expired, and I apologize for the error in date, but on September 30th, 2021, that change of the year always gets me, so I apologize for that. And this actually would go back for any individuals who, for the basis of COVID, during the course of October and November and December, and obviously through the course of this month, if they had to utilize their sick leave and they would have had COVID leave available, would actually make that available to them. And anybody moving forward towards the end of this year. This applies specifically to our certificated bargaining unit. The other that I'll be bringing will be our classified unit that will cover all employees within the district. And we're hearing, there's a discussion at the state of doing this, and we're just smarter than they are and we're ahead of the curve.
Thank goodness for that. If there aren't any comments or questions from the board, I'll take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ratification of a memorandum of understanding between the Carmel Unified School District and the Association of Carmel Teachers regarding COVID-19 leave.
Second.
Board President Sarah Hines?
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur?
Yes.
Board Member Anne Marie Rosen?
Yes.
Board Member Seaberry Nachbar?
Yes.
Board Member Carl Palestrini?
Yes.
All right, agenda item 3C.
We'll keep you going here. So this is an MOU with regards to our classified bargaining unit, and it's about reservations to the salary schedule, specifically around a stipend that is applicable to employees at Captain Cooper Elementary in the classified service. We brought this to you previously. What we found, once we hit implementation and the button kind of got hit, that it didn't quite implement the way that we intended. So we went back to the table with CSEA in an effort to ratify that and to rectify that, excuse me, and to implement it in the way that was originally intended. So this is bringing it back to you in that sense.
Great, thank you. May I please get a motion?
I'll do it again. I'll make a motion to approve the ratification of the MOU between COSD and CSEA, Local 190, regarding reservations to the salary schedule. Second.
Board President Sarah Hines?
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur?
Yes.
Board Member Anne Marie Rosen?
Yes.
Board Member Seaberry Nachbar?
Yes.
Board Member Carl Palestrini?
Yes.
Agenda item 3D. This is the purchase of two modular classrooms at River School.
So I will tell you, I did speak with Dan Paul today, so this information is coming from him. It is not my own. This is for the purchase of two modular classrooms at River School. It is one a classroom building and one an office building for use. We have some office needs in terms of we've got additional staff, and we don't have as many locations as we need to actually place them appropriately. So this would help alleviate some of that. It is done through a piggyback bid. And what that is, is there's a bid process that happens in another district in which we're allowed to go ahead and technically piggyback and utilize those same parameters and pricing. In this case, the vendor we have utilized in the past, the last time was when we purchased the CVHS Office Modular, was the same vendor. And this allowed us to get the best pricing and timing that was necessary. They were also able to provide the district some of the information in advance. So it allowed us to kind of develop the plans and a timeline that actually meets our needs.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
Are the modular classrooms, like the typical-looking modular classrooms?
They would probably look similar to what we, what you see out at CVHS. I would have to have Dan provide you any kind of profile of views of those. The interior will be a little different, obviously, for the two spaces that they're bringing in, one being office spaces and one being a classroom space.
I guess I'm just, again, thinking about health and well-being and those modular classes are hard to be in, as I'm sure, you know, the people, the staff at Carmel Valley High School can attest to. And I wonder if there's any flexibility, like with, you know, us having more opportunities for more windows, more light. I know you can't answer that.
You're correct. But it is obviously.
Just throwing it out there.
Questions that can be presented in terms of that question.
Yeah.
Let's put it this way, they're a serious upgrade from the ones at the high school, which are ancient history. I mean, those things are tired and old. So they're actually quite livable, but you are right. They are not designed to be, you know, user-friendly in terms of view and view shed.
One of the questions that I had asked is, are the modular buildings being placed at River School? Are they meant to be permanent? I mean, how mobile are they if we decide in a few years they're not necessary anymore?
Well, that's really your interest. So if you have a very, very long-term interest, you would go ahead and take a look at actually building facilities. In this case, because you have changing enrollments and those kinds of things, you want to make sure that not your entire campuses is a solid structure that you do want to be able to pick that up and move that when it's necessary. There's obviously a cost to do that because you have hookups and you have to unhook those when you take them and move them. You have to pour pads, all of those kinds of things happen. So there is a possibility that if you were to need it somewhere else, you could move that somewhere else. The challenge on that, that Dan would probably tell you, is you still have to go through DSAI approval in terms of the location, make sure that it meets all of the requirements. River School's unique, obviously, because it's in the coastal area, so there are permitting that's there. So all of those things have to be accounted for.
Yeah, you know, Tess, they are designed to be movable. But typically, it's based on enrollment. Enrollment's the trigger, pretty much, on modular buildings.
Yeah.
If I could just add something really quickly, just to sort of answer your question. Having worked in a mobile unit for quite a few years and had to share them and yada, yada, I actually liked the mobile unit better because it had more wall space, which allowed me to get the kids up out of their chairs and do things because I could put post-it notes on the walls and they could actually use those spaces as design spaces, which got them up and moving around, which I liked. It also had air conditioning, which my other classrooms did not, and I was sweltering. So in that respect, it's kind of nice.
I was going to say, teachers sometimes favor them because they have control many times of their temperature.
Or you're not in a whole entire wing where one person's got the control of the heater and you're like blasting out and going, please turn it off.
Okay.
Can I get a motion, please?
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the two modular classrooms at River School as presented.
Second.
Board President Sarah Hines?
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur?
Yes.
Board Member Anne Marie Rosen?
Yes.
Board Member Seaberry Nachbar?
Yes.
Board Member Carl Palestrini?
Yes.
Agenda item 3E. So if you all remember, this was on the agenda at the last meeting. So this is the Monterey County School Boards Association 2022 Excellence in Education Awards. And I'll pass it off to Tess because this evening, the board needs to pick our top three. We all need to agree on our top three, and then Tess will take it away from there. So I will have her remind us of who is on the list and who our suggested top three are. So just give it to us.
So I thought, you know, we don't have a lot of real current updates on what they've been able to do in the last year or so. But like for me, a big measurement for me is immediate needs, clothing, shelter, food, those types of things.
So I really would like to lobby for All In, and I was able to get an update from them to actually just right before the board meeting. And they really started as a result of the pandemic, and they've really, really grown and their services are, have grown as well. So they're a grassroots organization. They build the bridge between those with resources and those in need. So they're huge bridgers in our community, which I think that's what we're all about. They're currently helping fulfill essential needs for fire evacuees as well. So they're a call-to-service organization, just like they were with us when we did the food bank at middle school, when the pandemic began. And they really work with the domestic violence shelters, school-age youth, foster group homes, and the elderly. They serve over a thousand families on a monthly basis through their outreach, and they have a weekly drive-by for food and clothing markets. And I just thought, they've, they've weren't recognized last year. I think we did vote for them last year, but they didn't win. And I just feel like they have really risen to the occasion for the people in our community. So I would vote for them as number one. Number two, they're right there in partnership with the food bank. I think the food bank has been, made a huge impact as well, and they're continuing to serve, even though they're really having to expand their efforts in fundraising, because they're running out of money because of how many people they've served. So that would be my one and two. I don't have a strong opinion for number three, if someone would want to choose a number three, but that would be my recommendation for one and two. I'd like to suggest for number three, the Rancho Cielo. Yes. The culinary program.
I would too.
I think it's absolutely outstanding. I went out there and experienced the program.
Rancho Cielo.
It's on the last page.
Yeah.
It's on the last page. Well, second, it's right here, Carl. It's the first one, a specific Grove Museum is on the top, and then it's the third one down. Their program provides opportunities for the kids to work in a kitchen, work out in the restaurant, get experience that way, and actually heads them towards getting jobs and placement afterwards. It's been really impacted by the pandemic, just in terms of the number of people that will actually go out to their restaurant. And I think that they have really pushed to try and keep it going, and I think that they deserve recognition.
I feel comfortable with those top three. Seaberry, Carl?
They haven't been able to continue their level of services because their outreach, they go to the sites. And they have really been affected by the pandemic, and they have not been able to do that. They do some virtual, but not as impactful.
Thing, and it's still at risk or not working or what? I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, I would say they have not been as responsive to the pandemic, because I think they were more limited because of the pandemic. And All In and the Food Bank were able to continue and expand their services. They had to, they had to go back on their services.
And same with Rancho Cielo, they've actually been thriving during the pandemic as well. I know that they've expanded their outreach as well.
But the cause is, you know, when you look at it in terms of access to more comprehensive and integrated health information, ability to develop powerful leadership skills, influence positive changes at schools and the community, is a pretty noble thing. So that's why I brought it up.
Yeah, and I agree with you. And but these, a lot of these were written, this is their mission statement.
Yes.
And so they haven't been able to enact their mission statement, I don't think, in the last couple of years as effectively as they have in years past. But I love that organization too, Carl. I went to a fundraiser for them, but. So you want me to make a motion?
Seaberry, how do you feel about those top three? Okay.
You can.
And is that the, the green field, right? Green, yeah.
And I'm not familiar with what they've been able to do throughout the pandemic. So I think we all need to do some field trips this next year and really get familiar with that. Yeah.
I'm all for that.
Yeah. Me too.
Yeah.
Would you rather Rancho Cielo be number two and then Food Bank be three?
Does the ranking matter, Tess?
Well, it does.
I think it does.
It does. Oh, I didn't know. I'm just asking.
They basically pool it at the end and say, okay, who got the most ones, who got the most twos?
Got it. Okay.
And that's how they choose.
Okay.
So I think considering that we're looking at, you know, basic human services at this point in time and surviving a pandemic, I think we, as you said, we need to stick with clothing, shelter, food.
Yes.
Things like that, especially now that we have fire in our area, yada, yada. So I would like to make a motion to have All In Monterey as our number one choice. Food Bank of Monterey County is our number two choice, and Rancho Cielo is our number three choice for the MCSBA Awards in Excellence for 2022. I'd like to second that. 2021.
Board President Sarah Heinz.
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur.
Yes.
Board Member Anne Marie Rosen.
Yes.
Board Member Seaberry Nochbar.
Yes.
Board Member Carl Palastreni.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody who is still here. Thank you, Board. Tricia, Jessica, John, Craig, Ryan, Lisa. Thank you, guys. Meeting, Kathy, thank you. Meeting adjourned.